Pastor Matt O'Brien with Cavalry Baptist Church. If you would stand for invocation and remain standing for the flesh believers immediately. Bow.
Dennis Paul, we thank you for this opportunity to get the gift. We thank you that council still believes in power of work. And we hope that it comes easy to see whether you can bless our time here to get, or they seek your will and they seek your guidance and decisions. We just pray your blessings in this council and we will proceed. In the name of your great favor. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Matt O'Brien.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Marty.
Cleary.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Harry. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Harry's mother's in the hospital. He sent me and you a text. I don't know if you've seen it yet. Just FYI.
I hope his mother's alright. Uh, next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes from the regular council meeting, uh, October 27th, 2022. The Finance Committee meeting is October 27th, 2022. And the Public Utilities Committee meeting is October 27th, 2022. Do we have any edits, additions, omissions to those minutes? Saying none, those minutes would stand as approved. Next on the agenda, we have audience participation. If you'd like to address council, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to state your concerns. Saying none. Mayor, do you?
Yeah. So we've almost finalized all the specs on the Riverfront project. We're gonna maybe put that out to bid next week. Uh, we also received a seventy-three thousand grant from ODNR Nature Works program for Riverfront, uh, for beach volleyball and playground equipment. Other than that, we have Wizard Fest this weekend downtown. We'll have Park Avenue to Washington Street on Third locked off. To make arrangements in visiting downtown or visiting Wizard Fest and then try to find parking on Second, Municipal Ops or Fourth Street. A councilman client brought to me that some of you have noticed the paving project that is taking place, um, in some of our, you know, industrial area on Campbell Avenue and Front Street. I wanted to make sure everyone knew that was the first of our five paving projects. This was a A R C Economic Development grant funded project. We still have, as I said, four other ones to come from this, so that's not everything's been done.
Yeah.
Sorry, I got.
Nate?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Hi.
Yeah, progress, um, moving the garage over, uh, timelines on how, where we're at on that or?
Everyone moving, like getting all those parties there?
Yeah, where, where are we at?
I guess, well.
Is distribution there?
Yeah, I just made it probably gonna be beginning of year.
Okay.
I mean, once winter comes and some things will add, you know, we're not gonna do any patching or all that stuff.
Okay. And is there any updates on the, uh, the jacks, the wood that we installed in? That contract might say it's.
The lift.
For sure, yeah, the lift.
Yeah, I think there's a meeting coming up soon.
Craig?
Just, um, one question, the, the other four remaining paving projects, are those gonna wait till spring?
Yeah, that's all planned, but probably.
Okay. I mean, I was, I was hoping that you answered.
So yeah, the phase one, the city funded project, um, they asked, you know, to work to make spring. That's all planned, still waiting, but they still believe they can have that, uh, by the end of the year.
Okay.
Mark?
Mr. Mayor, um, when will the A B M, uh, energy audit take place?
No, I understand you have the. I can't do it. Alright, so I've been talking this week, and you told me that it's, uh, so we just have to set up the year, and we're planning on having that here.
With their guaranteed, uh, you know, savings, I just want to be sure in today's climate, we're meeting what they said that they would do to us, so, for us.
Good. Any other? Moving on to communications, there are none. Reports, there are none. Moving on to ordinances. Marty, would you please get first reading to ordinance twenty-two fifty-nine?
Authorizing the Finance Director to accept the bid of software solutions for new software for the Finance Department and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob?
John, does this need to be passed for mayor?
Um, you know, the, the quicker this gets passed, the quicker that we can begin contracting with them. They said it's about a ten month turnaround, so if we go out a lot further, then I don't want to do a software conversion and a new year closing at the same time. So it would be helpful if it would pass now, but understandable that it did.
Okay.
One mentioned here that the Finance Committee heard report on this, we give it a favorable recommendation, and then I'd like to say that I'd like to go ahead and, uh, suspend the rules for twenty-two fifty-nine, give a second, third reading, possible adoption.
Bob, I've got your, I've got your motion. I've got a little bit of discussion here.
Good.
Have, have you had a chance to get input from all the supervisors that will be using this software, John?
Well, um, it's primarily the Water Department.
Yep.
Um, and income tax and finance. Um, I've spoken to the girls that work in the Water Admin Department. Um, I've spoken to Brett also, and he was wanting some type of work order process in there that they have recommended to be on the system a year before that is implemented. But we would also be able to receive outside payments in this software. The water clerks were okay with it. Income tax doesn't change. Income tax will operate under the same income tax offer. And of course, my department has a critical on it.
One, one, well, maybe a couple other questions. Do we have the ability, say, for, um, rec basketball registrations, pickleball tournament registration, do we have the ability to accept online payments for events like that with this software?
Yes.
Okay.
We ask for that specifically.
Good. Okay, that's, that's one thing I want to make sure we're able to do with that.
Yeah.
I'm good. Anybody else have discussion? Do you have motion by Bob and toward? Craig?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Craig to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-two fifty-nine. Roll call please, Marty.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Uh, rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-two fifty-nine. Uh, would you please give that second and third reading by title only?
Authorizing the Finance Director to accept the bid of software solutions for new software for the Finance Department and declaring an emergency second reading. Authorizing the Finance Director to accept the bid of software solutions for new software for the Finance Department and declaring an emergency third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two fifty-nine.
Second.
Mike? I have a motion by Bob and a second by Mike. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two fifty-nine has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance twenty-two sixty, would you please get that first reading, Marty?
Authorizing the mayor to enter into the attached change order contract with I B I Group Engineering Services, U S A Inc., and declaring an emergency first reading.
Bob, discussion?
Oh, oh. We have discussion. I'd like to make a motion. I do. Did?
The sooner the better.
I'd, just like, what are the changes?
Nate? This is discussing finance. I'm gonna kind of defer back to the mayor, who's explaining that.
Yeah, so, uh, there was, we pay a percentage, it's not changing any of the money that's already been out, we didn't match that grant, and, you know, however, whenever we put it out and came back, we had a significant re-do budget in part of that, and so we had a lot of savings, so we did additional work, staying there on, uh, occupancy and buying, where it still served businesses that were part receiving that grant. And then we also did screws between Campbell and Third, also running the same scope from the area and sort of that. So now we're back up to where we were going to be in the first place, and we put the money forward to match. So now we did all that extra work to change it.
Got you. Thank you.
Craig?
It's eighteen thousand two hundred dollars, is that what you asked? That's what, that's what it says.
Wow.
But.
I think I did a better job this time.
But that, but that looks, but that looks really good, and, and I, I tend to avoid Second Street when I go to Lowe's or somewhere, um, and, and go First Street a lot, uh, and that, it's smooth, it, it looks nice, and coming up the side streets is really nice, and, and it, it looks good, so.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty nice, it was, that wasn't part of the original schedule.
I've got, that way it works quite good. Nate?
Are the businesses that, that's gonna be servicing, they're expanding, or are they happy with that, servicing the truck? The trucks across the tracks and all that stuff?
Yes, if you remember, the good settings, we waited on this grant for like.
Right. Has that, has that inhibited their growth any, or are they still on schedule?
Yes, so they just, in the past two years, eleven transfers came in, thirty-eight, three.
Okay.
That's a lot, moving everything from Catlinburg location to Alana, I think.
Okay, great.
So basically, we got more work done for the same cost as we originally anticipated?
Yeah, we did both, also, sure, we didn't have to chew up the road and just, just service it.
That's good.
Uh, I'll mention here for the, for this twenty-two sixty, that we gave it a, Finance Committee gave it a favorable recommendation, so I'd like to go ahead and suspend the rules and give twenty-two sixty second, third reading by title only.
Jacob?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-two sixty. Roll call please, Marty.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Uh, rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-two sixty. Would you please give that second and third read by title only?
Authorizing the mayor to enter into the attached change order contract with I B I Group Engineering Services, U S A Inc., and declaring an emergency second reading. Authorizing the mayor to enter into the attached change order contract with I B I Group Engineering Services, U S A Inc., and declaring an emergency third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-two sixty.
Jacob?
I'll second that.
We have a, a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to adopt ordinance twenty-two sixty. Roll call please, Marty.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two sixty has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance twenty-two fifty-six, would you please give that second reading, Marty?
Establishing a short-term rental Airbnb tax and declaring an emergency second reading.
Craig?
Sam or John, either one, have we got any more clarification on how, um, the obligation on their part to notify us, or whether we have to seek those out, um, to, to know, to collect that, or is it?
I have, I have no further clarification on it at all.
Okay.
But I can assure you, I will.
Okay.
I assure you.
Thank you.
So, right now, federally or statewide, it's kind of, I, there's nobody really, so that's why personally I wanted to get this in there, because we have a hotel tax, this is basically like a smaller hotels, but I also, in some research I've been doing, found we have some, some legislation on this, so I would say we probably have, I have to speak to Mr. Anderson, um, we'll probably have to do some amendments to this, uh, twenty-two fifty-six.
And is, is Airbnb a brand name?
It is.
Okay, because like, so.
It's a specific company.
But, so saying that, does that hurt us if like, someone opens a, a Verbo account?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to use more vague language?
Well, there's some legislation from a long time ago that's in our classified ordinances right now, and I'm then kind of going through that when I have time, a little bit more on some other.
But I, but I will say that, I mean, one, again, kudos to you for, for putting that on, um, because that does need to be on the radar, and it is, and, and it is fair. And secondly, I know, because when I've, when I've gone on vacation, I've stayed at Verbo, and they collect, they collect occupancy tax. And I'm sure, whether you're staying in Ironton or Galveston, Texas, they're collecting an occupancy tax, and if we don't ask for it, they're just keeping it.
You're right.
So.
But I, I'm, I'm gonna do some more research on this, and I'll probably come back with some amendments to the original language in this. John?
Do we know how many of these, uh?
As of right now. As of right now, everyone.
Would you text me who that is?
I will.
Also, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure will. Good. Uh, moving on to ordinance twenty-two fifty, would you please get that third reading, Marty?
Ordinance to establish a business zoning permit, third reading.
Nate?
Just like to mention, uh, we, uh, discussed this in length the last couple of meetings, uh, been working with Mr. Haney and Mac Anderson about, uh, uh, some changes we wanted to see to that, and I want to thank again Mr. Piles, uh, for his input, uh, for this ordinance. So, Mac sent out an email, I think it was earlier this morning, as far as the updates on that, should've went out to everybody, but still we're all, the new ordinance that will be, with this proposal, will be along the agenda for the twenty-first meeting. So Marty, please be looking to that. Including that is the, uh, the language with biennial registration, uh, correction, the two dollar registration amount instead of fifty. That would be deposit and general fund for reimbursement for postage. It'll be enforced by the mayor or designated by the mayor. When it comes to section four, the fine, uh, because it's not a civil, it's not civil, it would be, it would be a criminal, it would go to municipal court, um, so those fines would go through their, their process, it wouldn't be something that we would let our own. So that cannot be split with fines. Does that make sense? Also, it's included a definition for business in the update, and let me see, there also that, yes.
Craig? I was gonna wait till miscellaneous, but since you're already bringing it up, um, three things I'd like, uh, one, um, I don't mind to be a sponsor on that. Two, in section four, I think that it, um, is instrumental that we're always looking forward, and that we mentioned, um, I'll wait, and that we mentioned C P I, adjusting for C P I on our two dollar fee, um, whatever that may be, because postage is always gonna keep going up, so.
I don't think you have to put it in, I think the C P I, when you pass the automatic fee goes, you can put it in, I just think it applies universally across the board.
Scratch that, and then the other thing that we mentioned that I didn't see in that was, um, that the fee would be, in section four, again, the fee would be waived if there's another business-related fee paid to the city. Like, like for instance, the food trucks. Their registry, I, I'd like to see, again, just showing that we're not trying to collect the fee, we just really want to know what businesses we have.
Okay.
I would, I personally would.
Mark?
If I may address, Nate, will this be monitored by the Income Tax Department and code enforcement?
The Income Tax would have to sign off on it, if they are registered with their department, but I believe ultimately it would go back to code enforcement or designated by the mayor.
Yeah, but isn't it like part of finance to be tracking?
Part, part of.
But you're gonna have to track all businesses that you say will be for the ones that come forward, people that may lay this.
The zoning department will have to ultimately check in and make sure they're doing things legit, um, that's part of it.
But yeah, I mean, like, that would, that's easy to track new businesses.
So that won't need to be spelled out in the ordinance?
All the existing ones, though.
I, I had in my notes, I didn't know that existing businesses, the Income Tax be able to provide a list of existing businesses that are registered with their department, that they would, if you could send out a notice by mail, um, if this would pass on the twenty-first. Is that, is that something that we'd be able to, because I, I'd like to, as soon as it was possible to get passed, be able to notify existing businesses of that requirement for that. Also, one, one, one thing here, uh, was also changed was, uh, if a business changed locations or added an additional location inside the city, that permit would have to be updated at that time. That's all.
Is there any discussion?
That sounds pretty comprehensive.
All right. Ordinance twenty-two fifty dies for lack of motion. Uh, moving on to resolutions, uh, Marty, would you please give resolution twenty-two sixty-one reading?
Authorizing the Finance Director to require mandatory direct deposit for employees' paychecks and declaring an emergency.
Bob?
Make a motion that we pass resolution twenty-two sixty-one.
Mike?
Before we vote on this, if, if I could just ask John to expound on this just a little bit, more for the public than, we, we probably understand, but, so that the public who might be listening understands what this is about, John?
Uh, yes, I've mentioned this in Finance Committee, one of the things that the state auditors look at, and kind of have told us about, um, uh, funds, stale dated checks, that we need to really kind of get that cleaned up. So in doing so, we're looking at it, and we have more than one account, but this is payroll, which means that there, of, of the hundred and ten checks, or a hundred and thirty, the number of checks that are outstanding, ninety-five, we have ninety-five checks that hit the stale date criteria, which means that people aren't cashing their, their meal tickets, their, uh, clothing allowance, they're just different items, different scenarios. Now, with us also trying to go more towards a paperless environment with our new software, and thank you council for the approval of that, um, this will help streamline our payroll process. When we have to go back and do something twice, we're having to go back and do something twice. And it's not time efficient for us, we have to go in, verify with the banks, have to do stop payments with the banks, have to do reissues of the checks, we have to send out letters saying that you have thirty days to tell us whether you're wanting this reissued or not, or it goes into an unclaims fund. So hopefully, this will streamline the process by putting that money directly into the bank, rather than waiting for someone to remember that they have a check that needs a deposit or cashed.
Thank you, John, appreciate that.
I just have one question, John, so when we issue checks for clothing allowance or meal tickets or whatever, is that always in check form, or do the people that have?
They're both, they're both check format.
So if you don't have direct deposit currently?
Yeah.
You have a check out, if you have direct deposit, it goes directly in your bank account, correct?
For the most part.
All right. Jacob?
Make a motion to pass resolution.
Well, Bobby got the motion, you got the.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to pass resolution twenty-two sixty.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two sixty-one is passed, for resolution twenty-two sixty-two, would you please give that reading, Marty?
Authorizing the Finance Director to seek the best interest rate and/or rates for the city's funds and declaring an emergency.
Nate?
Discussion. I'd just like to say, I was impressed with the presentation of the City National, um, I like the idea of being able to maximize, um, return on investments we have and maintain liquidity, especially in this climate with the interest rates. I would like to get, get forward with that, and over the, John did due diligence in looking at other, all banks in town, with the store, I, I think that, I think it's a great option, so, um, I think where interest rates are, I, I think we should maximize that, and I like the idea, it's a bank in town, it's local, all those guys up, yeah, so, for that's worth.
Craig?
I, I may have missed it as I came in, as he was presenting, but, uh, is all of that F D I C insured?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nate?
Make a motion to pass resolution twenty-two sixty-two.
Aye.
Second.
Have a motion by Nate and a second by Mike to pass resolution twenty-two sixty-two. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two sixty-two is passed, and moving on to miscellaneous, Nate and Craig?
I just want to say, um, I want to thank. I just want to say, I want to thank Mr. Haney and our solicitors, Andersons, for working on some, a lot of legislation will be coming up. Our next meeting addressing some of the issues with addiction treatment facilities and recovery homes, and updating some of our zoning. So that'll be on the agenda for the next meeting, and I want to thank you guys for your work on that. I'd like to share an opinion request, I'd like to read that if possible, that I sent to Mac Anderson yesterday, and he replied, says, "By email dated November 9th, 2022, you have requested an opinion regarding the registration list of recovery homes from the city's moratorium, as to which locations about list can provide housing to more than five residents." The answer to that question is that no locations, regardless of zone, may provide housing to more than five unrelated persons in any one dwelling. No more than three unrelated persons, if established at the effective date of the ordinance, defining family as not more than three unrelated persons. So I'd like to make that a part of the minutes. If you wouldn't care, I have a copy here from the Mayor. If you wouldn't care to provide that to Joe Ross, and since we do that, I'd like to...
Thank you.
Nate, don't sell yourself short on the work you've put in over the past 14-plus months. You've done a great job on that legislation, the legislation we have in place, and the legislation that's coming up. So thank you for your work on that. Craig?
Two things. One, John, do you have at the ready a list of banks, local banks, that provide free checking, just in case? It's the one reservation I had about 2261.
As a matter of fact, we have talked to a couple of banks that they were willing, and I'm waiting to see this in writing, that they were willing to sign up individuals' new accounts with a $100 bank.
Okay.
So, yes, been working on that.
Okay, and I know of at least two, so I'll talk to you later.
Okay, great.
And then, secondly, I'd like to proceed, file, make part of the minutes, the September financial, September 22 financials, and the City of Ironton five-year plan provided by the Finance at the last meeting.
Jacob?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Craig and a second by Jacob to accept the financials and the five-year plan. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Craig, you good?
Yeah.
Okay. John?
Yes, I'd like to congratulate you and Council on the recreational levy. I think that's awesome, to continue to provide recreational opportunities for the youth, and hopefully it's also people like me within the City of Ironton. You did great work on that, and I think that the whole community wishes.
Thank you for that, John. I'm going to piggyback off of that, that's one thing I have in here. I would like to thank the residents of Ironton for supporting the recreational levy. We're going to, we've got big plans. One thing that we can already see is, I very seriously doubt we'd get the $73,000 grant for volleyball courts and playgrounds and things like that without a levy being on previous. I very seriously doubt we'd get that $73,000 to make those improvements. So you can see this rec levy at work right before your eyes. I want to thank the rec committee, Nick Klein and Craig Harvey. I'd also like to thank Manny Clary in third and center, and Brett Thomas, our Public Services Director, for all their hard work to try to educate everybody on what this levy actually does. It's not just youth basketball, or K-2 basketball, or it's taking care of our parks, it's giving our community spaces to enjoy, kids, playgrounds to enjoy. Just personally, I think that communities with strong recreational opportunities, and leagues and things like that offerings, I think they have strong communities. So I wholeheartedly believe in recreation in your community makes a strong community. So I really want to, I want to thank the community for renewing. It was just a renewal. It wasn't costing anybody anything differently, despite what you've heard. It was a renewal, and I would really like to thank the community for coming together to pass tonight's levy. That being said, recreation basketball, last signups are this Saturday, and I've got it right here. Tryouts are also going to be immediately following. So we've got fifth and sixth grade boys trying out at 10:00 a.m. If you're going to register, if you staff to register, please show up before your scheduled tryout time. So fifth and sixth grade boys, 10:00 a.m., fifth and sixth grade girls, 10:30. Third and fourth grade boys, 11 o'clock, third and fourth grade girls, 11:30. K-2 will hold registrations there, but you will not be trying out. So K-2, no tryouts, but you can still register.
What's the location for that?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ironton Middle School and Elementary School gyms. 301 Delaware? I think 301 or 302. So there's that. Everybody good?
Want to thank the Mayor for the Ironton cleanup days. A lot of folks from my end of town participated in that. It's working like clockwork. Everyone really appreciates that. Thank you.
Good deal. Marty?
Make a adjourn.
Bob?
Second.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Craig to adjourn tonight's meeting. Roll call, please.
Leary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you guys for attending.